I'd like to call this meeting to order. We roll call by towns. Andes? Holchester?
Here.
Davenport? Delhi? Here. Deposit? Franklin? Hamden?
Here.
Hancock?
Here.
Harpersfield?
Here.
Portwright?
Here.
Masonville? Meredith?
Here.
Middletown?
Here.
Roxbury?
Here.
Sidney?
Here.
Stanford?
Here.
Tompkins?
Here.
Walton?
Here.
Bavina?
Here.
And the notice of the meeting pursuant to county law section 151 and Board Rule 1, "The organizational meeting of the Delaware County Board of Supervisors is called for the purpose of organizing for the year 2025, including election of a chairman, vice chairman, clerk of the board, and budget officer. Any other business that may properly be brought before the board will be conducted." I ask that you please turn your attention to Chaplain Donna Ladner for the invocation and Glenn Faulkner for the pledge of the flag.
Good afternoon. I'm Donna Ladner. I live in Sydney, and I've been doing the jail ministry with Pastor John Grenier for the past two and a half years. And he asked me if I would come and pray over your meeting, and I'm honored to do so. So first, though, I want to read scripture to you. I looked up, in my Bible, scripture's about wisdom, because I know you all have wisdom in it. Except more. "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and do not rely on your own understanding; in all your ways acknowledge him, and he will make your path straight. Happy is the man who finds wisdom and who acquires understanding for it. Understanding, for she is more profitable than silver, and her revenue is better than gold; she is more precious than jewels; nothing you desire can equal her. Long life is her right hand, and in her left bridges and honor. Her ways are pleasant, and all her paths are peaceful. She is a tree of life to those who embrace her, and to those who hold her are happy." That was from Proverbs 3. Let us pray. With those who are inspired words of God that we just prayed, that I just read to you, and so I ask, Lord, now to come before you. We give you all praise, honor, and glory, because you are our mighty God, and we love you, and we want to serve you. Each one here is accepted the obligation to serve their community, Lord, and I thank you for each one of them. You are our source, and you give us the ability to carry out the duties that you have put before us. God is our waymaker. He's not just our source, he's our waymaker. He makes a way where there seems to be no way, because he is such a mighty God. He will help you. He will protect you in your life, because all you know that we have hills and valleys. Now, those valleys should not be obstacles. They should be resources for your growth, if you respond in that way, and God will help you do that. Now, we have this new year of 2025, and we don't know what it's going to bring, but God does, because he knows all things, and he is all-powerful, almighty. The Bible tells us to trust in him, because he loves you, and he gave his only son to die for each one of us, that we could have eternal life. All we have to do, he did it all. All we have to do is bow our knee and accept him. And I pray that for each of you, I pray that you trust in God for all your needs, because Jesus does love you. Now, I pray the Lord bless you and keep you. Make his face to shine upon you. Be gracious to you, and grant each one of you peace, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. If you please join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For election of chairman, do I have any nominations for chairman?
I nominate Tina Molei. Second.
Any other nominations? Can we get a motion to close the polls?
Shall move.
I'll second.
All in favor of Tina for, Tina Molei for chairman?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Tina. I would like to call County Clerk Haley Gransberry to come forward and administer the oath of office to Chairman Molei.
Repeat after me. I, Tina B. Molei,
I, Tina B. Molei,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the state of New York,
and the state of New York,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of the office,
the duties of the office,
of chairman of the Board of Supervisors,
chairman of the Board of Supervisors,
and for the county of Delaware,
and for the county of Delaware,
according to the best of my ability,
according to the best of my ability,
and I do further swear,
and I do further swear,
that I have not directly,
that I have not directly,
or indirectly paid,
or indirectly paid,
offered,
offered,
or promised to pay,
or promised to pay,
contributed,
contributed,
offered or promised,
offered or promised,
to contribute any,
to contribute any,
money or other valuable things,
money or other valuable things,
as a consideration,
as a consideration,
or reward,
or reward,
for the giving or withholding,
for the giving or withholding,
a vote at the election,
a vote at the election,
at which I was elected to said office,
that I was elected to said office,
and have not made any promise,
and have not made any promise,
to influence the giving,
to influence the giving,
or withholding of any such vote,
or withholding of any such vote,
so help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. For the election of vice chairman, do I have any nominations?
No nomination else.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair?
Do you motion with clerk of the board?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Clerk of the board, do I have any nominations for clerk of the board?
I nominate Penny Bishop. Second.
Are there any other nominations?
Yes, suppose poll.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And for election of budget officer, do I have any nominations for budget officer?
I nominate Park Merrill. Second.
Fourth. Are there any other nominations for budget officer? Need a motion too?
Yes, suppose poll.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Congratulations. Good afternoon and Happy New Year. I'd like to take a few moments to reflect on why Delaware County is such a special place and why I find being a member of this board so fulfilling. This is my ninth year as chairman and my 24th year as a member of this board, serving as supervisor for the town of Bavina. Over that time, I've learned many lessons, have weathered many storms, and most importantly, I've watched Delaware County excel as a leader in almost all areas of local government. First and foremost, I attribute this success to the talents, professionalism, and expertise of our department head and our staff. However, I also believe that success is a direct result of the guidance and support of this board. As a representative government that operates through a committee system, I believe we have been able to give appropriate guidance while maintaining a strong fiscal responsibility to our taxpayers. We have 11 communities consisting of five to seven, or committees, I'm sorry, of five to seven members each, and we have 26 individual departments, many of which who oversee multiple programs. As chairman, I try to attend as many committee meetings each month as I can, keeping myself apprised of the needs of our departments and the demands for their services. It can be overwhelming to hear about all the needs, the state and federal mandates and projects that are being worked on each and every day in our county. It is even more impressive when we note the number of ways we excel and lead the way in addressing the needs of our constituents. Here are just a few of the Delaware County ways we serve our communities above and beyond most other places in New York State. We have the only municipal composting facility in New York State, and only one of a handful in the entire country. Our facility is complemented by a state-of-the-art recycling program and an innovative and state-of-the-art landfilling system that is sensitive to the needs of our local community members and the environment. It is also the only municipality, municipally-owned solid waste facility in New York State that does not charge our residents for garbage disposal. Our county DPW's Century 21st Bridge Program instituted in the 1990s supports towns and villages by taking ownership, maintenance, and oversight of almost all bridge structures larger than 20 feet in length. The program makes sure all bridges are designed, built, and maintained to standards that exceed state and federal mandates, significantly reducing our number of deficient structures across our county. It is complemented by our highway management program developed by our DPW and GIS staff to identify, name, and rate all of our culverts, highway conditions, and structures on town and county roads. This inventory with associated map books is maintained by our county planning department and GIS staff for all 19 towns in the county and serves to provide necessary information for compliance with state and federal accounting and maintenance systems. Our countywide town planning advisory service has operated since the 1980s and works to provide technical expertise, guidance, and support to our rural planning and zoning boards. This service allows our volunteer boards to address land uses based on the needs and character of the individual communities, while also providing guidance on the ever-changing demands for developable land and the complications that arise when there are competing uses for those lands. It is complemented by a suite of services, including a county-run GIS program, environmental planning services, and a landscape architectural services. We operate a drone program in Delaware County that has proven to be an asset in many ways. Our two drones are operated by county employees and have taken the additional responsibility associated with becoming pilots to ensure a robust program can deliver multiple benefits. We've been able to deploy the drones for search and rescue missions, safe evaluations of rivers and streams during high-water events, and identification of potential damaging ice jams in the winter. We have supported economic development projects that allow for site development mapping and a laundry list of flights in support of local projects, including mapping for new trails, parks, and even housing development potential. With the use of LiDAR cameras and 3D modeling, we can truly support development projects that county has the only watershed affairs office to address not only our challenging relationship with the New York City watershed, but the needs, legal and legal challenges and influences of the other watersheds in the county, including the Upper Delaware and the Susquehanna River's Chesapeake Bay watershed. Delaware County excels at creating partnerships that seek to find commonality among programs and supporting services with our sister agencies to ensure that these services are provided to our residents. Our core group is made up of representatives from our town technical staff, our home technical staff at DPW, Planning, Watershed Affairs, Home Enforcement, Economic Development, and Emergency Services, along with staff from Cornell Cooperative Extension and Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District, also the Watershed Ag Council with the CWC as consulting members. This group of professionals provides unbiased, scientifically-supported, and evidence-based information to ensure we are making sound decisions on this board floor. This group has developed programs such as de-cap, precision feed management, emergency stream intervention, and local flood analysis programs. It was the work of this group that provided all of the support needed to ensure the National Academy of Sciences understood the importance of our position regarding land acquisition in 2020. This led to the 2024 decision by New York City to cease acquisitions in priority areas three and four. The work of this group of collaborators cannot be understated and has led to state and federal policy changes to duplicate our work. They support agricultural innovation, hazard mitigation, economic development, highway management, and local infrastructure concerns. This group of professionals has proven over the past 30 years that science-based decision-making creates results and sets the stage for our recognized success, catching the attention of academia, state legislators, and federal programs that seek out advice from these very individuals. Collaboration within our many human resource service programs lends itself to the greatest service possible. Contracting services with agencies such as Delaware Opportunities and Cornell Cooperative Extension allows us to provide innovative services while seeking new ways to meet the needs of our most vulnerable populations. Programs and services such as heat, weatherization, meals on wheels, medical transport, and child advocacy are all essential for and our growing population of working poor. We are not immune to societal issues including homelessness, food insecurity, addiction, and crime. Our ability to build bridges with agencies that provide expertise in these areas complements our own staffing is essential to meeting these needs. Like all other things, we excel in this area and provide services that are far superior to some of our neighboring communities, as we are always seeking new and creative solutions to these problems. Our accomplishments have not gone unnoticed. In 2024, two of our own department heads were elected to state-level positions. Sheriff Craig Demond was elected the president of the New York State Sheriff's Association, and probation director Scott Glucker was elected the area representative for the state of New York to serve on the American Probation and Parole Association. The dedication, expertise, and common sense of these department heads are being recognized at the state level and making a difference in some of the most profound ways. In 2024, we celebrated with a ribbon-cutting ceremony signaling the completion of the multi-year construction project for the three new DPW facilities. We also saw substantial completion of the two new Department of Social Services facilities to house our homeless and provide safe and private visitation for our foster families. These capital projects have been planned for many years, and it is wonderful to see them come to completion, allowing us to better serve our county. Notably, we have been able to complete these significant projects while paying off our debts. The ability of this board to continue to be fiscally responsible while still providing substantial programming to our communities is a testament to the work each one of you puts into this job. Probably the most profound difference this board and its members have made to the lives of our residents and the quality of life in Delaware County is represented by the commitment of our ARPA funds. Under the leadership of Mr. Marshfield, this impressive list of projects we supported included funding to support local farmers, preservation of historically significant structures, enhancement of broadband services across the county, improved county infrastructure, a commitment to strategic planning for our future, and support of our county fairgrounds. The difference we have been able to make with this funding will be felt for many generations. As we move into 2025, I am certain we will continue to see additional unfunded mandates from the state, increasing energy costs across New York State, and the implementation of new regulations in support of the climate base with challenges at both our local town and village levels, as we are forced to implement new building code standards, fund additional programming for human services, and provide for our aging population and the needs of our working families. It is important that we continue to work toward the common goals of preserving our communities, supporting programs at the county that serve our local towns and villages, and seeking new ways to work together while providing the highest level of services to our residents. We will continue to be successful as we learn from our mistakes and build on our successes while continuing to be a leader in New York State, making a difference every day as we support our county department heads and in turn our taxpayers. As we look forward to the new year and set the stage for a productive 2025, I'd like to thank this board and all of our department heads and staff for your continued dedication and support of all county residents, visitors, and residents. Thank you for your support. Okay, next in this organizational meeting, I need to make some board committee appointments. Under the Community Services Board, a four-year term ending December 31, 2028, I appoint, reappoint Supervisor Art Merrill, Jane Francisco, and Dr. Sally George. Cooperative Extension Service, a one-year term ending December 31, 2025, I'd like to reappoint Supervisor Wayland Gladstone. Under the Delaware County Industrial Development Agency, a three-year term ending December 31, 2027, I'd like to appoint Noel Goodspeed and Christopher Price, and reappoint Michael O'Brien. Under the Delaware County Local Development Corporation, a Under the Delaware County Local Development Corporation, a three-year term ending December 31, 2027, I'd like to reappoint Michael O'Brien. The Delaware County Planning Board, a three-year term ending December 31, 2027, I'd like to reappoint Bruce Dolph and Art Edel. Under the Health Services Advisory Board, a two-year term ending December 31, 2026, I'd like to appoint Supervisor Rebecca Wali and Liliana Morgan, like to reappoint Supervisor Arthur Merrill, supervisor Dr. Rohan Jessina, and Wayne Shepherd. The Soil and Water Conservation District Board, like to reappoint a one-year term ending December 31, 2025, supervisors James Ellis and George Haynes, a three-year term ending December 31, 2027, like to reappoint Bruce Dolph and Jerome Frame. Under our Tourism Advisory Board, I'd like to reappoint for a three-year term ending December 31, 2027, I'd like to reappoint Glenn Neelis, Michael Ergos, and Kim Riaram. Under the Youth Bureau Board, I'd like to reappoint a three-year term ending December 31, 2027, Mohammed Badi, Cooper Harvey, Angela Kelly, Chris Maney, Jocelyn Plows, Susan Sainsbury, and Crystal Trask. I would like to take a moment after we just, I just reappointed or appointed new member to the Delaware County IDA. I'd like to talk a little bit about Jim Thompson. Jim Thompson served as chairman of the Delaware County Industrial Development Agency for 30 years, where he advocated and supported growing businesses and job creation throughout the county. Jim was a local business owner himself, growing the insurance company his father began before him. He worked tirelessly to help support other local family-owned businesses grow and thrive in the county while encouraging, seeking, and often romancing new businesses to come to the area. He firmly believed in preserving our rural character and enhancing agriculture throughout the county, making him a leader in financing agribusiness and businesses that support and complement our agricultural community. In the early 90s, while the New York City Watershed Filtration Avoidance Program was being developed, Jim had the foresight to see the potential harm new rules and regulations could have on our local businesses, especially our agricultural community. As chairman of the IDA, he worked closely with the Planning and Economic Development Director Ken Beery to bring attention to the impacts the new proposed rules and regulations could have on our ability to support our rural communities. Ultimately, these rallying cries led to the formation of the Catskill Watershed Towns and the negotiations that developed the memorandum of agreement in 1997. Jim will be remembered for his love of Delaware County and his passion to make life in our little corner of the world. Business community will be a part of his legacy, and we as a community will forever be grateful for his vision, commitment, and dedication. The standing committees, I will be handing out any changes at the next board meeting that will be held on January 22. And with that, I'll go right into our regular meeting. Approval of the minutes. We had two meetings. We had our regular meeting in December, and then we had a special board meeting on December 23rd. Were there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, they'll stand as submitted. Communications?
All communications received have been referred to their respective committees for review.
Okay, there is no privilege of the floor. Standing committee reports. Move on to resolutions. Okay, resolution number one of 2025. Mr. Marshfield?
Reappointment of Commissioner of Board of Elections, I'll move that, Democrat.
I'll second.
Reappointment Commissioner of Board of Elections, Democrat.
This is a voice vote? Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number two.
I bring this up, move for its adoption.
Second.
Reappointment Director of Information Technology.
It's another voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number three.
I bring this resolution up, move for its adoption.
Second.
Reappointment Director Office for the Aging.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number four.
Bring this resolution up, move for its adoption.
Reappointment of Public Defender.
Who seconded that? Joe? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Raise your hand if you're opposed.
Reappointment of Stop DWI Coordinating.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number six.
Resolution six, reappointment of Director of Veteran Services.
Is there a second?
I move that.
Okay. I won't make you read it again. Okay, it's a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number seven.
Pointing to Youth Bureau Director, I'll move that.
Second.
It's a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number eight.
Bring this resolution before the board and ask for its adoption. Second.
Designation of County Newspapers pursuant to County Law Section 214.2.
It's a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Raise your hand, please.
Pardon?
Yeah, raise your hand so she knows. Okay, resolution number nine.
I bring this up, move for its adoption.
Second.
Designation of Depository for Delaware County Funds.
Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 10.
Second.
2024 Budget Amendment Transfer Fund Sheriff's Office.
Questions on this resolution? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Helsa?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wali? Out, sorry. Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkman?
Yes.
Inkley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Closer?
Yes.
Clayton?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Resolution number 11.
I will bring the resolution number 11 to the board and ask for its adoption. I'll second.
2024 Budget Amendment Transfer of Funds Department of Mental
Resolution we did.
Hopefully, this is the last one of 24. Hopefully, it's considered really above what we budgeted last year at this time. Again, this is
That's amounted to about a quarter of a million dollars between the three of them?
Yeah.
And the state used to fund 50% of it.
50%, right? Now, it's all on local tax pay, so we've got 100%.
Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Helsa?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkman?
Yes.
Inkley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Closer?
Yes.
Clayton?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
I'll second.
2025 Budget Amendment Transfer of Funds Probation Department.
Questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone? Merrill?
Yes.
Helsa?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkman?
Yes.
Inkley?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay? Resolution number 13.
I'll move resolution 13 and ask for its adoption. I'll second.
2025 Budget Amendment Acceptance of Friends of Recovery Dedicated to Others Funding, Department of Mental Health.
Is this normal, is this our typical normal funding?
No, I don't think it was quite that extravagant. It's, this is a, this is a huge fund.
More, sort of more than normal.
Or do, right.
I don't ever remember it being so high.
Nah, no. That was, that was kind of out of the loop from what I understand, but it funnels through the mental health program the same as the drug and alcohol abuse funding that comes to those programs. Has to be funneled through us. This is, this is a really big shot in the arm for or doing for the residents of Delaware County who need those services.
So does that make up for them not funding that 50%?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
You gotta balance it out some way, Wayne.
Okay, please call the roll.
Not for the papers.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Helsa?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Closer?
Yes.
Clayton?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Payment of Machinery Rentals Department of Public Works.
Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Helsa?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkman?
Yes.
Inkley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Closer?
Yes.
Clayton?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Change order number four, proposal number 27 of 2022, replacing of the Arbor Hill Road Bridge over the Little Delaware River, Town of Dahl High, County of Delaware, Department of Public Works.
Yours, could you bring more resolutions like this forward?
Yeah, we'll work at it. Okay. That was a nice project, too. Very nice project.
Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Helsa?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkman?
Yes.
Inkley?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Wait your turn.
Resolution number 16.
I bring this up, move for its adoption. Second.
Authorizing the implementation and funding of a transportation project which may be eligible for federal aid and/or state aid or reimbursement from Bridge New York Funds, Department of Public Works.
Questions on this? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Helsa?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkman?
Yes.
Inkley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Closer?
Yes.
Clayton?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution number 17.
Authorizing the implementation and funding of a transportation project which may be eligible for federal aid and/or state aid or reimbursement from Bridge New York Funds, Department of Public Works.
Questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill? Helsa?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkman?
Yes.
Inkley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Closer?
Yes.
Clayton?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution number 18.
Proclamation for 100-year anniversary of the New York State Association of Counties, NISA.
This is a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, we have two not prefiled resolutions. I'll waive rule 10 without objection. First resolution is number 19.
Bring this resolution to the board and ask for its adoption.
Authorization to hire outside third-party vendor for pending litigation matters.
Isn't this kind of an open-ended resolution?
Yes. Has insurance said they for sure will not pay, or is that still pending? That's still pending.
I personally feel Delaware County residents should not be responsible for the costs associated with litigation.
So do we, but we're being ordered.
I'll, we are.
Yes.
You know, we walk ourselves into it, we get ourselves the hell out of it.
It's a voice vote? Yes. Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So carried.
Set two?
Yes. And our last resolution, payment of the audit, resolution number 20.
Bring this board, ask for its adoption. Second.
Payment of bottom.
Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Helsa?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Crystal?[1760.04]